Good afternoon. At this time I'd like to call the regular meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the room.
Emerald? Here. Lopez?
Here.
Lopez Zapata?
Here.
Aguirre?
Here.
This is the point in the agenda where members of the public may address the board on matters posted for the special meeting and in accordance with Government Code Section 5495-4.3 Subsection A. The board will provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the legislative body concerning any item that has been described in the notice for the meeting before or during consideration of that item. Each person wishing to address an item on the meeting notice in closed session will have two minutes to do so.
There are no speakers?
If there is no further communication, I will recess the meeting for consideration of the following closed agenda items as posted in the meeting notice. Item one, student expulsion suspended expulsions reinstatement. Education Code Section 48916 through 48918. Students identified by case and ID number. Item number two, public employee evaluation appointment transfer. Government Code Section 54957. Item three, public employee discipline dismissal release. Government Code Section 54957. Item four, conference with legal counsel existing litigation paragraph one of subdivision D of Government Code Section 54956.9. Item five, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. Paragraph two of subdivision D of Government Code Section 54956.9. Item six, conference with labor negotiator. Government Code Section 54957.6. We will now adjourn to closed session.
Good afternoon. At this time, I would like to reconvene the regular board meeting. Clerk of the Board, please take role.
Arancibia?
Present.
Emerald?
Here.
Lopez?
Here.
Lopez Zepeda?
Here.
Aguirre?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Mr. Solis is absent.
We will now hold a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Board met in closed session preceding this meeting to discuss the following issues. Item one, student expulsion suspended, expulsions reinstatements. Education Code Section 48916 through 48918, students identified by case and ID number. Item two, public employee evaluation and appointment transfer. Government Code Section 54957. Item three, public employee discipline dismissal release. Government Code Section 54957. Item four, conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation, paragraph one of subdivision D of Government Code Section 54956.9. Item five, conference with legal counsel. Anticipated litigation. Paragraph two of subdivision D of Government Code Section 54956.9. Item six, conference with labor negotiator. Government Code Section 54957.6. The Board took the following action. Moved by Lopez Zepeda, second by Emerald to approve the reinstatement of one student with a vote of Arancibia absent. Emerald, yes. Zepeda, yes. Solis, absent. Moved by Lopez Zepeda, second by Emerald to approve the appointment of Laura Bumataya as principal and special assignment with a vote of Arancibia absent. Emerald, yes. Lopez, yes. Lopez Zepeda, yes. Solis, absent. Moved by Lopez Zepeda, second by Lopez to approve the appointment of John Patel as principal, Montgomery Middle School with a vote of Arancibia absent. Emerald, yes. Lopez, yes. Lopez Zepeda, yes. Solis, absent. Moved by Emerald, second by Lopez Zepeda to approve the appointment of Sophia Gray as principal, Mar Vista Academy with a vote of Arancibia absent. Emerald, yes. Lopez, yes. Lopez Zepeda, yes. Solis, absent. Moved by Lopez Zepeda, second by Lopez to approve the request for leave of absence for one certificated employee and deny the request for leave of absence for three certificated employees with a vote of Arancibia, yes. Emerald, yes. Lopez, yes. Lopez Zepeda, yes. Solis, absent. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the June 23, 2025 regular board meeting with a change that the Board will first consider Board Agenda I V after the considered agenda. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Yes.
Arancibia?
Yes.
Emerald?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Lopez Zepeda?
Yes.
Motion passes. Four yes, one absent.
The Board is very proud to recognize our student board member from this past year. She has been a stellar representative of students from across the district as she brought a variety of important issues to the Board. She always provided detailed and honest reports from the ASB presidents and she worked hard to address concerns from all school sites. We thank her for her leadership and service to the district and wish her the best of luck in her senior year. Please help me in recognizing Ms. Liana Davis. Please help me in recognizing Ms. Liliana Davis. We have a little plaque for you and let's go take a picture. Before we continue, I have a few words for Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis, it has been an honor and a pleasure to collaborate with you this past year. Term comes to an end. I reflected on your dedication and commitment to the role as student representative to the school board. You have exemplified the importance of incorporating the student perspective in decision-making and communication with stakeholders. Your future is bright. I know that you will continue to develop as a leader, a scholar, and an athlete. I look forward to learning about your achievements and your new endeavors in the future.
If I may, Presidents.
Yes, please.
I also want to say some words of appreciation and gratitude. You have truly been a role model for how to be a civil servant and really exemplify being of service. You may not have realized it, but when you come here, you bring forth and represent the voice of your peers and students. Most of the feedback we received from you was done with courtesy. It was done with advocacy and in support of students, but always in a tone that allowed collaboration and really truly were an example many times to the adults who engage in a public space of how you can be effective and how you can be of service and truly represent those who have elected you to be in this space. So, thank you for being that role model and we're excited to see what you do next year and where you end up going after that, but thank you for your service and thank you for being that voice of advocacy, but doing that in a way that really exemplified what we would hope public servants are. So, thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Okay. We will now have a message from Superintendent Dr. Morces Aguirre.
Thank you, President Lopez Zepeda. Good evening and buenas tardes, bienvenidos a todos and welcome to all to our June 23rd, 2025 Board of Education meeting. Since we had a meeting a brief two weeks ago, this will be fairly brief. Our Facilities Subcommittee met in collaboration with our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Jania Quirk, to review some of the exciting work going on and some of the planning happening around construction projects. It's really exciting and we're actually going to see a little bit of that coming forward this evening. So, thank you for that, Ms. Quirk, and for the members of the Facilities Subcommittee. We also had an opportunity to join Southwestern Community College for their Juneteenth Jubilee. I want to extend my gratitude to Southwestern and for the ongoing partnership that we feel is only getting stronger between Southwestern and Sweetwater. Thank you, one of the trustees is here this evening, Mr. Dumis, but we have a wonderful relationship whether it's celebrating Juneteenth together, whether it's getting ready to open a middle college. It really feels like we're moving in a very similar direction. And so, that's very, very appreciated. I believe it's a signal to our community of what we can do as institutions and agencies when we work together to support our community. So, thank you to Southwestern. And also, a public service announcement. As a friendly reminder, our Nutrition Services Department will offer meals to students during the summer. I invite anybody who might be interested to check out our website for more information. And again, that's something that we do offer to support our community and our students. So, please check out our website for more information. And with that, I hope everybody has a restful summer break. Let's get on with this evening's meeting of the Board of Education.
Already, we will turn on the mic. We will now have a message from Ms. Liliana Davis, student board representative. Her final message.
Good evening, members of the Board, district leadership, students, families, and community members. I met with all the ASB presidents towards the end of May, I believe, and we mostly talked about student safety, especially athlete safety out on the field, out on the track, wherever they play, just making sure we have administration present at sports games, which has played a crucial role in protecting our athletes as well as our spectators. And as someone who actively participates in sports, I've noticed and appreciated the presence of administrators during these events. We also have a bunch of ongoing construction and it's amazing to see all the progress that we've made over the past year. I'd also like to recognize the state of our school bathrooms. They've been far, they've improved very much. And as I come to the end of my term as serving as a student board representative, I want to take a moment to express my deep gratitude and reflect what an honor and a privilege this experience has been. First and foremost, I want to thank my family. Their unwavering support and endless, very endless patience and constant encouragement have meant more to me than words can express. I'm not sure if you've noticed these three wonderful individuals at the meetings, but at least one of them who's been here and stayed for every single meeting. And not just my meetings, but my games, my matches, performances, and everything in between. My dad, who's practically been at every single event of my life. My mom, who's been, who gave up her own birthday to be at our last meeting. And my brother, who has truly been an amazing role model and paved the way to greatness. To Ms. Fox, who couldn't be here today, and Ms. Visado, who's to my left, thank you sincerely for your guidance, mentorship, and faith in me. You both have been instrumental in my growth and not only as a student leader, but also as a person. You modeled what it means to lead with integrity, compassion, and purpose, and whether it was answering my countless questions, offering thoughtful advice, or being flexible with your time. You consistently went above and beyond. I will carry the lessons you've taught me into every future endeavor and I will truly guidance your guidance. I will truly cherish your guidance and assistance and know that the student board representative will flourish in her new role with your constant guidance. To all of you sitting beside me to my right, thank you for valuing and uplifting student voices. Your presence at our meetings, your attentiveness, and your willingness to engage with student concerns have never gone unnoticed. I've always felt heard, respected, and genuinely welcomed in this space, and that is a gift that I will always be grateful for. You have truly embodied leadership in every aspect and I know you will all continue to lead the rising generations with passion and compassion, and I can't wait to see the future of this thriving district. Now, looking ahead, I am filled with optimism. I had the distinct honor of serving on the selection committee for the incoming student board representative, Ms. Elizabeth Flores. And among a strong group of applicants, Ms. Elizabeth Flores stood out to me and many others for her empathy, her drive, and her clear commitment to student advocacy. I am confident that she will bring fresh ideas, strong leadership, and a deep sense of purpose into this role. The future of student representation is bright and I look forward to seeing how she continues to elevate students' voices within our district. Serving as a student board representative has been one of the most meaningful and formative experiences in my high school career. It has allowed me to gain a deeper understanding of how policy affects students, to engage in thoughtful dialogue, and to represent the diverse voices of my peers. It has taught me how to lead, how to listen, and how to advocate, and for that, I am profoundly grateful. As a student and an athlete, I am proud to be a part of this school district that shows compassion to all students, no matter their situation. And as a student board representative, I am proud to have embodied that mission and to serve as an example of how student leadership and leadership in general can create change in individuals and communities. And finally, let me leave you with this. Let's all strive to look farther than the averages and statistics. Let's read between the lines and value every single student independently, recognizing their unique stories, strengths, and potential. Because behind every number or statistic is a person who deserves to be seen, heard, and supported. Gracias por la oportunidad de servir.
Wow. Alrighty, moving on to reports to the Board. The Board members will receive the copy of the annual BCBOC report. Are there any questions or comments? No? Okay, moving on. Public communication, this is the point. On the agenda where members of the public may address the Board on any matter not on the agenda and have three minutes each to do so. Pursuant to the Board bylaw, the Board may limit the time for public comment on any single topic to 20 minutes per topic. The Board of Trustees cannot legally take action on or respond to matters not posted on the public agenda, but will refer the matter to the Superintendent's Office for review and report. Speakers shall refrain from using profanity and shall speak in a respectful manner. Thank you for your cooperation. Do we have any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Okay. Clerk of the Board, would you please read the items being pulled for the consent agenda?
The following items are pulled. F3 by staff, F6 has been withdrawn by staff, G3 by staff, I5 by staff, and J5 by staff.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Davis.
Yes.
Arancibia.
Yes.
Emerald.
Yes.
Lopez. Lopez Zepeda.
Yes.
Motion passes, four yes, one absent.
Okay, F3. Report on Board requests for information and policy direction to staff and Board communication. Anything to share? No? No? Everybody have a great summer. Enjoy the last few weeks before we start over again. And congratulations to everybody else who's moving into new positions. Okay, and now we're going to go to I5.
Yes, thank you.
I5 and, let me get the name. The, oh, it's already up there. The Black Student Union Leader's.
If I may.
Yes.
If I may, I want to take this opportunity to ask Dr. Moore to introduce the team that will be here to present on how we have been supporting our African-American students this year. As we look out at our district, we're so proud of the work that this team here has really done with just a deep level of care and I'm going to use the word love for our students and I think it's being reflected in how we're going to receive this information and how our students are feeling supported throughout the district. But with that, Dr. Moore, if you can introduce the item.
I will, thank you. And the Board, I'm presenting here at the podium because I am part of the team that will be presenting with you this evening. So, I am, as Dr. Aguirre put it, we're very proud of the work that we have embarked on. And this work started long before I got here. There's been folks who have been carrying the torch for our African-American community in this district for many, many years. Names like Vivian Tuck and Charlene Lemons and Joe Foulter come to mind as folks who have worked with this district and really embarked on this work. When Dr. Aguirre became our superintendent, he and I went on a listening tour. It was very, very shortly after the George Floyd protests and our Board at the time had passed a resolution for Black Lives Matter. And the very, very clear and resounding information that we received was that our African-American students wanted to feel heard. They wanted to feel seen. They wanted to feel like they had someone to go to to address their concerns. And somehow, some way, I was blessed with knowing these fantastic people that are beside me and that are getting ready to present. And this team has come together these last few years and really done a fantastic job in coordinating our efforts to support our African-American students. So, I'd like to introduce, we call ourselves the BSU Black Student Union Elders, not because of our age necessarily, but, but, but because in our community, being an elder is being someone who you often provide respect and gives guidance and wisdom to the younger people, our students. So, I have Ms. Sasha Scott, the newly-named principal of Montgomery High School. Our consultant, Dr. Kasimu Harley, who we've heard probably about in some other Board meetings when we talked about his work and his contract. Our TOSA, our teacher on special assignment focused on ethnic studies, Don Dumis. Principal of Palomar High School, Sasha Haynes. And fantastic science teacher extraordinaire at Hilltop High School, Jessica Nasamiento. And before I turn it over to them, because I'm almost done talking, I will come back to the podium to review some data, but you heard me announce their job titles because those are their full-time job titles. This work, as Dr. Aguirre pointed out, that they do is from the heart. It's a work of love and it's the work that I think we are really very, very proud of and you'll see and hear all about it. So, if you'll indulge us for just a few minutes as we go through our support for African-American students, I turn it over to Ms. Scott.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It is my pleasure to kick off our presentation tonight. We're going to talk to you about the work that we've been doing to help build belonging for our Black and African-American students in our district, specifically to foster community and help empower their voices. So, it's a lot of work, but it's like Dr. Aguirre has mentioned, it's a work of love and we are passionate about it and we are proud of the work that we have accomplished so far. So, you already met us. Ms. Santi couldn't make it tonight, but she is also one of the BSU elders, so I want to make sure we give her a shout out. As you know, our district goal for BSU is to help support all of our African-American students and their advisors, especially around the terms of fostering a sense of belonging, relationships, connections between students, staff, and the community. With all of your support and approval, throughout the past three years, we've been able to accomplish that and then some, but our work is never done. We still have more work to do, but we are seeing good progress and you'll see that later today. Just a little snapshot of where we are in terms of our enrollment of our African-American students in our district. As you can see, they comprise about 7.4% of our district, which is a small number. However, we, you can see in the breakdown by schools, we tend to see a larger population of our Black and African-American students on the east side, but also all throughout the district. Our goal, as we just previously mentioned, is to make sure that the students, no matter if they're at East Lake High or Southwest Middle, we want them to feel connected, not only to their school, but also to other Black and African-American students in our district and their allies. So, while it is a small percentage, we are confident and really, it's really important for us that those students, no matter the size of the number of African-American students at their school site, they feel seen. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jessica Nasamiento.
Hi, I'm going to talk about the events. So, we have several events that we host throughout the year. We start out with training our advisors, being a club advisor, as myself. It's an unpaid position. It's on your duty-free lunch. You know, you've got a bunch of teenagers in your room. What are you going to do? So, we bring all the advisors together in the fall. We do advisor-only meeting. We train them. We give them curriculum that they can actually use in their meetings, pre-planned, pre-vetted by myself and other advisors behind me. And we also go to see what the needs are of those advisors and we try and set them up for the whole year, from giving them a calendar. We have a meeting with their officers, so when they have elected officers, we bring the officers and the advisor in. the officers and the advisor in to just fully support, because an advisor doesn't really have the time to do that during their full-time job. Let's see if I go the right way. So we have different events. Our events span throughout the year. So in the fall here, you can see we had like our advisor training. I want to shout out to our Black Talk, so we try and vary our events from a social, getting to know you. As Ms. Scott mentioned, we have students all over the district. Some schools have seven Black students. So how do we bring those students into the fold? We have social events, get-to-know-you events, and then we have more educational events. So we hosted a Black Talk. We also vary where those events take place. So sometimes, like the year before last, we did it at Hilltop High School and at Westside School, and then this year we did it at Oto Ranch. So trying to find out what are the needs from the families, what are the needs from the students? We separate the students, and we, of course, plan those all events. Some other things we did this fall, we did like a sip and paint at Hilltop this year, which was super fun. We had an Afro-Latino taco night, which came through from San Diego State. They actually hosted all the tacos and everything. And then we were able to talk about the connection between African and Latino connections. We have many students who are mixed race who find themselves kind of pulled in between, so we were able to host that as well. In the spring, again, we have some more events. You're going to hear about RISE here in just a little bit, all of which have been possible with the support of district transportation. So we have buses pick up our kids during the school day. We get them there, you know, well into the school day, and then we get them home before school's out. This spring, myself and Dr. Harley, we were able to take some students to Atlanta to see historically Black colleges, not only see a Black experience in college, but also experience cultural events in Atlanta, and that takes us to RISE.
Hello, everybody. Our big annual event is our RISE conference. We've done it for many, many years. This year was better than ever. So this is the one that we, all the students really talk about being their favorite thing that we do. This is where we put a lot of our time and effort to. This year, for the first year ever, we hosted it at Southwestern College so that we could have a bigger venue. Why this was really important is because we wanted to get more kids there. In the past, we've done it on Saturdays, but there are sports, and there's families at time, and there's vacations. So doing it on a school day was really important, and the only way to do that was by having it at Southwestern College. The students, again, you kind of see some of their quotes that they have there about really finding themselves, finding their voice, and just seeing kids that look like themselves. By hosting it on a school day, we were able to, again, because if you guys have buses there, that took them, every single school, almost every school was represented and had students that came in, our Black and African-American students as well as allies, other students that were part of the BSU. It was 400 students, and that was only because we had the capacity of the Performing Arts Center, which only holds 400. We actually had more than that want to come, so we're hoping Southwestern College gives us a bigger venue next year. No pressures, we're going to need that. Throughout the day, we had a keynote speaker from County Office of Ed, and then we had 25 student-focused sessions. Some of the ones that were really popular, we had everywhere from our own adult school that came and speak, Southwestern College spoke, and SDSU. We also had the trade unions there speak. We also had a law enforcement one that was really big from a lawyer and a police officer about knowing their rights. We had an art one, and we had HBCU panel member one that you can see there as well.
I don't know how many slides I have to click through, so I'll just kind of go, you know, I just do what my bosses tell me. So one of our major events takes place at the end of the year, our rites of passage ceremony, which, you know, in many indigenous and African cultures, a rite of passage is, it's a celebration of a change, right, of growth. And so we bring all our graduating seniors from BSUs in and the promoting eighth graders in and their families, and we were at the PDC. And the BSU advisors present a kente cloth stole there that you see. Again, thanks to the board approving and paying for this. We get this cloth from Africa, from Ghana, and we happen to know the best seamstress in this side of the Mississippi. She goes by Mrs. Dumas, she's my mother. And so she makes these, but they're fantastic. They're wonderful. And then we get the pins for the promoting eighth graders, and, you know, we have the African drums playing. We will hear some people speaking, myself, I speak. Dr. Agiri attended and spoke last year, and you saw, I mean, the place was packed. We're probably going to have to go to Southwestern for that, too. So here's some pictures from this year's event, and as you can see, you know, the kids, they're ear to ear. I mean, this is just a big event. They're so proud of themselves. We don't just give those sashes to any senior. They have to be an active member in the BSU. They have to participate in our district events and community events, and, you know, their advisors say, okay, this senior, that senior, they earned it, and so they get that. And here's some other pictures there, and you see we have the flyer that goes out. We email it out to the parents, and it's a great event. Okay. So also, what I do, which is a little bit different than what some of the other elders do, is I do a lot of intervention work on the campuses. So I'm a TOSA, so I have a little flexible schedule, whereas the principals have to be on their campuses, and Ms. Nasaminto is teaching her classes. I can go, and which I went to several sites and met with the advisors one-on-one. Sometimes they express that they're having difficulty with this, that, or the other. I go, I help them, I give them even more meeting ideas. East Lake Middle, for example, one of the things I did this year, you know, they have a huge Black population, and they had counselors step up to be their advisor, and it was too many. So I said, I'm going to help you out. So then I started coming, and I was co-advising East Lake Middle's BSU, and the numbers just grew. And it was a fantastic thing, because being a TOSA, of course, I'm out of the classroom, and this gave me an opportunity to see kids regularly. So it was fantastic. And I'm going to do Rancho Del Ray this upcoming year, as well as East Lake Middle and probably Benita Middle. I really want to get in the middle schools, so that when they get to the high schools, they already are used to, you know, participating and have a good idea about student leadership. I also go to schools on request and give a presentation on the N-word and how damaging it is to students. This year, Ms. Wong invited me to Granger, so we brought in two or three English classes at a time, and I presented to them for, you know, an hour, Dr. Harley and I. And so that way, we did the whole school, right? We came over two days and did three or four presentations a day until we got the whole school. And then at request, I did it for a couple of classes at Oti Ranch, a couple of classes at Sweetwater, at Benita Vista High. So one of the things that I'm trying to do is figure out how we can get this presentation to every student. And then, I know I was supposed to talk about something else, maybe it's later. Okay, okay.
Good evening. I need to do something real quick that's been bothering me.
Thank you.
No problem. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. And just real quick, one of the things that I do is just support the work of these wonderful people here. And then there's other duties that are assigned that I get from Dr. Moore. The idea, I did a presentation on microaggressions for staff, and basically, the idea is to, how do we facilitate a climate of belonging? And that's one of the things that is kind of a hallmark of what I'm doing. I'm just going to highlight, focus on solution-focused interventions at various sites. Situations come up at various schools. I get calls from Dr. Moore to go out, to talk to the administrator, to see what I could do to support those efforts. BSU elders went through everything, and I really just work in tandem with them to support their work. The ongoing consulting with BSU advisors, and one of the things that you may not realize is we have allies that are part of the BSU elder mix, that's basically because of the population, because I think these folks represent many of the teachers that are there. So I provide support to them in terms of how do we deal with the climate. So those are just some of the things, and I know I only had 30 seconds, so I'm going to just stop right now.
All right. And real quick, before I jump to celebrating our successes, we've been thanking the board, and I want to also make a point to thank Transportation Jenna and the Transportation Department, Eric Spann and the Nutrition Services Department, because without them and their help and support, I don't know if they're here or if not, but it would make our job a lot harder. So thanks to them, because we were able to feed all 400 students for the RISE conference, transport them. We took another 200 students to School Yard Wrap. We fed them all breakfast and snack, lunch, so thank you to those two departments. So our successes. Before we started this work, we had only five active BSUs in our district, three of which were led by three people in this room. So we are so happy to announce that as of April of 2025, we have 16 active BSUs in our district, both middle and high school. And that is work, again, that does not just end here. The teachers, the boots on the ground, they're the ones who are giving up their time in their duty-free lunches to do that work and engage with us in all of these activities, so we thank them. We do have a few schools that are inactive, that have inactive BSUs, but as we mentioned before, the importance of our events and hosting them so frequently is the schools that don't have active BSUs, they still come, they're still invited to all of our events so that they can connect with students at other schools or in other BSUs and still feel a part of it. So we felt that was super important, so that even if they don't have an active BSU at their site, we are still blasting emails and sending invites to their parents and students throughout the entire district to make sure they know when our events are, so they can still attend.
Okay, for the last couple minutes, I just want to describe what all this, and from a data perspective, what all this leads to and all this support. So this is some lagging indicators, but in, last year, at the end of 2024, we took a look at some AP data, and what it showed is, A, there's been a growth over the years of pass rate of students that are passing the AP test. But for African-American students as well as mixed-race students, when they are taking an AP class, they are passing at a higher rate than the rest of the population. And what we really need to do is ensure that we have more students taking the AP test, and that's really a lot of the work, as you've heard from the RISE conference and other intervention work that we're doing, is trying to increase our numbers of students that are taking the AP test. When we look at suspension rates, when I first started in this work with Dr. Agiri, we took a look at suspension rates, and I did a presentation to the board. It was over Zoom, because this was during COVID, and our suspension rate for African-American students was astounding. It was higher, it was disproportionate. It was higher than the 7%. We were suspending our African-American students at a much, much higher rate. As you can see, there has been a decline. That 5.7, and you'll notice there are sometimes some different numbers that are thrown out for suspension, but it's still one of the higher rates of our groups, but we're headed in the right direction. Same with chronic absenteeism. You'll see that our chronic absenteeism rates are lower, are going lower as the years go on for our African-American students, so we're headed in the right direction. What I really want to point out is some dashboard data, and I don't want to give a lesson on dashboard. We've got Dr. Winters to do that, but the dashboard is a very, very quick indicator of the progress, and it's based on the progress of students, not necessarily individual test scores, but how students are doing over time and the progress, and are we headed in the right direction? And our dashboard indicators really show, particularly when we compare our African-American students in our district to African-American students across the state. So you'll see, we are in the yellow, which is mid-range for progress. We still have students that are scoring below in English Language Arts on our standardized test, but in the state, we're far ahead. They're, you know, they're 58 points below the standard, where we're 15.6 points below for our population of African-American students. So we're moving in the right direction again. When you look at mathematics, and this is one of the more telling ones, the indicator is yellow, so mid-range, and we're making progress. At the state level, African-American students are at the bottom, in the red range. For career and college, this is our students are taking courses that will lead to graduation, will lead to college acceptance, as well as career path courses. Again, mid-range and increasing, you'll notice. At the state, it's still the same, but we're at a higher preparation rate than the rest of the state. Chronic absenteeism, mid-range, but moving in the right direction. Our chronic absenteeism declined, 6.3%. At the state, you'll see similar. You'll notice, again, 18.4% of our African-American students in our district are chronically absent, where it's about a third at the state level. So we are much, much lower than the state level. Suspension rates, again, declining, but not at the rate we want it, and will be continuing. And you'll see that's an 8.5 rate for the number of students that they looked at. They looked at a smaller sampling of students, 1,300 versus our entire population. It's just the sampling that the state reports out on. When we look at the state, though, little bit lower suspension rate, but they're still in, they're in the orange for the state because it's not declining fast enough. This one, very, very telling. We're in the green in graduation rate for African-American students, and the state is in the orange level, so not the progress that we're seeing. All of our indicators are either yellow or above. We have no indicators for African-American students in the orange or red on the California dashboard. So, yes, there's work to do. We're looking to get in the green and blue areas, but one of the things I think we're most proud of, and this is just a very, very, it's like when you start going down to the micro detail, and this is only Oti Ranch, and this is only 11th graders, and this is the California Healthy Schools Survey. So it's a very, very small number of students, but what you'll notice in this one, are they connected to the school? You'll see a large number of students, in most cases, are connected to the school. African-American students, all groups had an increase from 2023, '24 to '24, '25, and African-American students had one of the highest increases of being connected. They're the second group over. Caring adult relationships. And I have to say that this gives you the detail. You heard Dr. Harley talk about his work at Oti Ranch. You heard us talk about how we focused at Oti Ranch and doing some real focused work. You'll see in this detail that what our work is really about is having these caring adult relationships so that our students feel heard, they feel seen, and they can succeed. And so as I turn it over to Don Dumas for the last slide, I do want to say that it's working with this group, and thanks, Ms. Scott, for pointing out, Ms. Santi. We have three African-American administrators, three principals in this district. When I got here, I, we may have had one, I think Dr. Cook might have been the only one at the time. And to see this team, very capable, all doing a fantastic job at their respective schools, is really something to be proud of. And I think when we all meet, we talk about our work and how important it is and how we ourselves have to serve as role models. And lastly, what I want to point out is in this era of division that we're experiencing in our country about diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI, we've taken, and our board, thanks to you again, have taken a stance to indicate that all of our students need to feel welcome. And one of the features of our BSUs is every student, every student is invited. It is a focus on African-American students and culture and that piece, but you'll look at our pictures, you'll see our RISE conference, and you'll see a very, very diverse group of students, because there is research, Joe Johnson, Cynthia Uline, Stanley Monroe, they have a book called When African- they have a book called, When African-American Students Succeed, and there is definitive research that shows when African-American students in a school or in a district are successful, because we're talking about one of the most marginalized groups, that the entire district sees success, the entire school sees success. So I'm, again, very proud of the work, and I know Don has a closing crescendo, and then we will wrap this up.
Okay, so, next steps for us is, we are working on this thing that we're calling the Black Education Community Collaborative with Southwestern College and Chula Vista Elementary. You know, one of the things that we figured out was, you know, it shouldn't start with us, and it shouldn't end with us. And, you know, obviously, being on the board at Southwestern College and talking with their faculty and staff, and, you know, we found out that particularly black male students have the lowest transfer rates, and one of the biggest obstacles is math. So he says, you know, when we get your kids from Sweetwater, you know, they might not be ready for math. And I'm like, yeah, well, when we get them from Chula Vista, they might not be ready for math. And so I was like, you know what? Let's start way earlier. So everything that we're doing for Sweetwater as elders, we are trying to replicate with the elementary school, and not just Chula Vista, but we're starting there, because that's our biggest. But there's also National City, there's also San Ysidro. There's all these other school districts that feed into us. And so we wanna work together, starting from TK to 14th, having history lessons, having, what, you know, pacing out, what math should I be in in 7th grade? What math should I be in? Where's, having tutoring nights. We're getting, you know, professors from Southwestern, volunteering teachers from our district, willing to help out. So, you know, they say Rome wasn't built in a day, nor was Mali. We're gonna get there, right? But so this is some of our next steps. We want our BSU Student Advisory Council, we wanna get leaders from all the other BSUs together to be able to maybe present to you, right? We also want this to continue. Believe it or not, one day, all of us are gonna retire. One day, all of you will be retired. And what we want is for this work to continue. We want it to be sustainable. We want when there's a new board, when there's a new superintendent, when there's new BSU elders, we don't want them to have to start all over. We don't want them to have to fight. So we really wanna collaborate with you all on developing some policies that are going to, you know, be on the books, and they can withstand, you know, change, right? Because, you know, we're all gonna maybe get promoted, or, you know. Like I said, retire something. But we have to be able to maintain the work that we're doing. And of course, we wanna develop a website, we wanna, you know, of course, we've got some fantastic teachers and students that can do that for us within our district. So again, we got 16 schools now with active BSUs. We want all of them to have active BSUs. We wanna continue our RISE Conference and all of the other events that we do. We see the results of it, and we're not stopping. We're just excited to continue next year. We got a brand-new student union at Southwestern that will hold like 800 people or something. So, you know, hopefully, we'll have our conference there. Dr. Moore?
To the board.
Hey, great work.
It's a two-way street, and thank you, because you are the boots on the ground.
Yeah, I wanted to congratulate everyone, and Dr. Moore, you began the conversation that there were folks, pioneers and elders that had started it. But I'm gonna be honest with you, I remember being, getting interviewed by a group of African-American parents before I ran, right? And this was a concern, and this is like one, I don't know, how do we create belongingness and a feeling of belonging in our campuses? And what's never happened is having a crew or a team with all this input actually functioning laterally instead of top to bottom, which I think is really important, and I'm gonna commend everyone for this, because this is really amazing. And lastly, Don, it ain't rocket science and getting the kids' math scores over at the college. It ensures hiring Latino and African-American professors who actually live in the community to talk to the kids and actually teach math. That's, and we seem to walk around it all the time, but it's the reality. To get a person that speaks Spanish or understands a kid's experience in math, which is the hardest part, hardest subject to do, right? I think that's, it's really important, but I'm glad you're starting the collaborative for that reason. That conversation needs to have happened 20 years ago, 30 years ago. So thank you for everything that you do, and I'm really, really proud. And to see it just flourishing is just really wonderful. Thank you.
Just if I may to add, we had the fortunate, fortuitous to have Ken Weston and LeBron James in continuing that group. These are LeBron James, I know it sounds like the basketball star, but LeBron James is actually a graduate of Sweetwater High School and who's gone on to be a math teacher. And the San Diego County Office of Education, in partnership with our district and Teaching and Learning, they've continued, these are two math wizards. Ken Weston was at Texas Instruments, and he developed the actual, the scientific calculator when that came out many years ago. But these are math wizards, and they are teaching our teachers how to connect with our students and teach them math. And I think when you looked at the dashboard, that is one of the indicators that we're seeing. And so it, this is, it is a collaboration across departments, across divisions, to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our students.
Can I say something as well?
Wonderful projects here, and thank you for, in many cases, decades of commitment to this. I know Kasimu Harley and I met during the Anytown period back in the early 90s. And kids from all the schools in the county were there, mainly the seniors, young people who, of color mainly, who were pegged by instructors and administrators as, these kids really need some guidance, or we may lose them, right? And the mix was a lot of folks who weren't students anymore, who were just dressed in their street clothes, like former police chief Jerry Sanders. And man, the kids were blown away at the end of the, a week, when he came in in his full regalia, you know, with the gun and the star on his chest, where people let go of their stereotypes about different people and just related to one another as fellow campers and experimenting with this program. And it's wonderful to see these connections continuing to be made. And now, wherever you go in the county for people who've been around, somebody has been, somebody has been impacted by these programs. And this, what you're working on now is continuing to say, let's keep those connections going. Let's keep communicating with one another. And let's keep opening doors for everybody to have compassion and understanding and connect with people from different ethnic backgrounds, different social backgrounds, because we are just one big community. So thank you for everything you're doing, and please let us know how we can be helpful in this too. Because it's easy to, you know, we talk, we talk this, but we gotta walk the walk too, and it'd be great to be included in some of these projects where we're reminded personally in our face of the possibilities that we have in this community. So thanks so very much, all of you.
I just like to say, I remember my dad is, has been always one of the only black administrators in my school, so it's really nice to hear that you guys have black people in power all across the district. I know to me and so many other students, it's so nice to see, you know, people who look like us in powerful positions, and to be able to see, like, oh, I could be there one day, I could be like that one day. And like, if you see my dad's classroom, as many as the other people of color, the teachers at our school, like, you can really see, their classrooms are full during lunch, during nutrition break, because that's where students feel safe, that's where they feel like they belong. So it's really great to see that you guys are doing so much work. It's amazing.
And if I may, I also wanna extend my gratitude to the team. And it just so happens that we are currently doing a book study, and it's called, The Answers in the Room. And basically, what it comes down to is, approach our work from an appreciative inquiry perspective. And what a wonderful example of something that's working and working really well in our district. So it's important to elevate the work, recognize and celebrate the work, and that's why I really appreciate this opportunity to take a moment to celebrate these moments. Because there's a lot of work that happens, and we wanna make sure that we are seeing, we are hearing from this group. And quite frankly, we can learn from this effort across the district to support some of our other students. Because I fervently believe that one of the antidotes to division is unity. And I think one of the ways we can do that is by celebrating those spaces where we can come together. And so again, thank you for convening, for supporting, and for all the great work that you do.
Thank you so much. All right. Moving along. Item G3, approve the Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP, and the LCFF Parent Budget Overview, LCAP for the 2025-2026 school year.
Thank you, President Lopez Zepeda. As you may recall, this item had its first reading at a public hearing and first reading at our last board meeting, so it's returning now for a second reading and action. Can we go ahead and motion, make the motion? I'd like to move to approve this.
Yes. Make the motion.
Davis?
Yes.
Arancibia?
Yes.
Emerald?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Lopez Zepeda?
Yes.
Motion passes for, yes, one absent.
All right. Moving along. We're gonna go to J5. Adopt the Sweetwater Union High School District's 2025-2026 Proposed Budget.
Thank you, President Lopez Zepeda. In a similar fashion, the district's budget held its first reading, public hearing and first reading at our last meeting, and it's now returning for a second reading and adoption.
Motion approved.
I was gonna say, are any questions or comments? Okay, motion?
And I'll second that, but if I could just, we know that budgets are kind of moving objects. This is our idea of what we're going to have in the way of resources and where we're going to spend them. What kinds of things happen along the way that, where we may have to revisit this?
So there's a number of steps, but I'll ask Dr. Sockel to walk us through, for example, the 45-day review that happens. There's some steps that go along the way. That is definitely correct, trustee Emerald. The next step for us is to await the final budget adoption from the state, but I'll ask Dr. Sockel to walk us through some of the steps.
Thank you, Dr. Agiri, and good evening, President Lopez Zepeda and board members. So in regards to the question, yes, we, the budget process is always ongoing. So at this point, we're presenting this to the board based on the information that we do have from the state. Within the next week or so, the budget should be approved. And we know that earlier this month, when we last presented, the Senate and Assembly had presented their budget to the governor. So hopefully, here in the next few days. If there are any material changes, that is what we bring forward to the board in August, which is known as the 45 Days, Dr. Agiri mentioned. We'll be working with the county, if there's something specific there that we'll highlight and include. And then if not, then it'll be included in our first interim report that we'll bring to the board in December. But again, we continue to monitor, we've got a lot of contractual considerations. We have our Day 10 for enrollment purposes, that's done over the summer, once we start school into July and August. So we will evaluate the staffing, we'll look at those budget changes, anything that may come up from a day-to-day operational standpoint. But that is part of what we then call the working budget. So after we transition that on July 1, and we'll continue to monitor any, we'll see what comes at the federal level, too. As we shared during the last meeting, we're still seeing if there's some things that we do have factored in the budget, like our Title II, III, and IV. But the federal government does not have that, so it depends on how that all plays out, too, if there are any changes. But certainly, any material items we'll be bringing forward to the board via the superintendent.
And then, at what point do we have a firm number of students enrolled in our schools? The, in fact, the ADA we receive?
That's also an ongoing process. So we work closely with Dr. Winters and others here within the district and the school sites. We have what's known as the SEBED State, which is the first Wednesday in October. So that's like our first measurement of enrollment. Then that does tie into our funding, which we call the P1, which is in mid-December. So all these points, along with then also P2, which is in March, are all measurements that we analyze in how the state then will fund the district, based on enrollment, and then also average daily attendance. Okay, it's a moving number throughout the year. So that's what rolls into as a variable when we present those interims to the board.
So it's a moving target until it's finalized, and even then, we don't know exactly what's gonna happen on a federal level or on the state level.
A lot of moving pieces. There's still some uncertainty into the budget that we've built in.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Sockel, I'd like to thank you for the memos that were shared with me on, not last week, but the week before, on the different budgetary movements and considerations. I know it took a lot of your time, and I really appreciate you doing that. So motion, second, let's vote.
Davis?
Yes.
Arancibia?
Yes.
Emerald?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Lopez Zepeda?
Yes.
Motion passes for, yes, one absent.
Ladies and gentlemen, the regular board meeting is now adjourned. Have a pleasant evening.